Hi, welcome to the Groveland Select Board Meeting.
Yeah.
Welcome to the Groveland Select Board Meeting. We're going to call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock and we're going to roll call into executive session. The board will enter executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3 to discuss strategies with respect to pending litigation, specifically Michael Lawless versus the Town of Groveland and Robert Valentine, Civil Action Number 24-CV-12605-GAO. Ed?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Jason, yes. Becky?
Yes.
Kathy?
I'm going to accuse myself for a potential personal conflict.
Thank you. Relive?
Relive.
Awesome, thank you very much. Welcome back. And we'll go ahead and open with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. I wasn't made aware of any public comments?
No.
No? All right, no department comments, updates? We're good? All right.
We'll have one next week from the county town.
Thank you. To next meeting. All right, discussion impossible vote. We're going to start with the U.S. Bicycle Route 1. Discussion impossible vote regarding Adventure Cycling Association's request to identify appropriate roadways in the Town of Groveland for inclusion of their map system. And I believe we have Kerry Lyons. Irons?
And I also have a PowerPoint presentation that they shared with us that I'm just trying to load on the screen.
Yeah, just holler when you're ready.
Was that Chris?
No.
That's somebody else. Oh.
Just waiting for the PowerPoint presentation.
Yep, that's me, I'm sorry.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
I can hear you, yeah.
I'm just joining.
All right, Kerry. All yours.
Okay, so I just want to take a few minutes to explain the U.S. Bicycle Route system for those of you who are probably not familiar with it. Can answer any questions as we go along, or at the end it's up to you. But this is basically a mapping project to establish bike routes across the country. Next slide, please. So it's numbered and signed, although only about a quarter of them are signed. It's officially approved by state DOTs, so Mast dot and ASHTO, the American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials. ASHTO is the same regulating body that controls the interstate highway numbering system, the federal highway numbering system. And then Adventure Cycling Association, which is the organization I'm with, we provide technical support to ASHTO and work with the state DOTs to make this happen. Next slide, please. So for those of you not familiar with Adventure Cycling, we're a nonprofit and our mission is to inspire, empower, and connect people to travel by bike. We have a, actually it's up to 50,000 mile route network of mapped rides. We sell maps, we run organized tours, we have a magazine, and we do national advocacy. We're over 50,000 members, most in the United States but also Canada and the rest of the world. And our route network of those 50,000 odd miles provided a blueprint for the first U.S. Bicycle routes. Next slide, please. So this is the National Corridor Plan put out by ASHTO. The solid lines are already designated U.S. Bike routes, and the dashed lines are potential U.S. Bike routes. So you can see there's a couple of bits and pieces in Massachusetts of U.S. Bike Route 1, which is what we're talking about here. U.S. Bike Route 7 uses the Western New England Greenway, basically from Canada down to the Long Island Sound. There's 35 states and the District of Columbia have designated routes already. Next slide. Next, this is one of these indexed slides. So in 1982, the first routes were designated. Next. Then the project kind of fell into disrepair, and I could go into long details as to why, but in 2004, it was restarted, the task force was created. Those first routes were U.S. Bike Route 1 in Virginia and North Carolina, and U.S. Bike Route 76 in Illinois, Kentucky and Virginia. So we created the task force in 2004, and Adventure Cycling provided staff support for that. In 2008, ASHTO approved a process for designating routes and a new corridor plan. And then in 2011, the first routes were designated since 1982. And in that intervening period, about 21,000 miles have been added to the system. Next slide, please. Yeah, so just a brief history in Massachusetts, those short sections of U.S. Bike Route 1, basically all on trails. But in order to designate a U.S. Bike Route, each of the pavement owners along the way needs to tell Mast dot that they're in support. There's 35 pavement owners along this route in Massachusetts, and it follows the East Coast Greenway. But each agency has to tell Mast dot that they're in support. If you could back up, please. And that can come by way of a resolution passed by Groveland or a letter from an appropriate official. And I'm doing the work of doing an outreach to all the local agencies. Next slide, please. So the route in Groveland is basically co-designating the East Coast Greenway and U.S. Bike Route 1. Next slide. Next advance. So basically from Plummer Spring Road in Boxford, and then on Seven Star Road, Center Street, Rollins Street, Center Street, King Street, and then West Main into Georgetown. So that's what, and just quickly here, the total mileage there is on the order of six miles, maybe a little more. Next slide, please. And this is what it looks like on the map. You can see Groveland in the upper left, and it comes in from the northeast, makes a turn there, and heads down towards the rail trail down by, I'm sorry, south of Georgetown in Boxford. Next slide, please. And that, by the way, on that slide, there's a link to the map, anyone can look at that. So as I said, Mast dot needs a letter of support or resolution from Groveland. And if there's suggested changes, and that's part of the reason for the discussion tonight, that those changes can be made. If it affects the adjacent jurisdiction, then there needs to be some negotiation. But if it's all within the jurisdiction, you know, if somebody says, oh, it's on Oak Street, it ought to be on Maple Street, that sort of thing, those changes can be made. So there's no cost requirements or constraints placed on local agencies. This is a mapping project, so we're just trying to provide a long-distance bicycle travel route across the state of Massachusetts. Next slide. So the benefits of this are pretty straightforward, improved routes for bicycle travelers, obviously positive health and environmental impacts. And when there's a small gas campground, motel, bike shop, et cetera, and they're on a recognized bike route, they do see an uptake in business. Last slide, please. So I'm Kerry Irons, I'm the U.S. Bike Route Volunteer Coordinator with Adventure Cycling. Ellie Zachary is our Advocacy and Routes Coordinator with Adventure Cycling, and there's our contact information. So basically, this is an opportunity for you folks to chime in with your thoughts and answer questions, and then presumably then move that forward to, like I said, either an approval resolution or a approval letter. And I've sent Annie Schindler sample texts, as well as Rebecca Oldham's sample text for both of those. So questions, anybody has?
Kathy, you got any questions?
No, not at this time.
Becky?
I did. So when I first looked at the route, my first concern was the lack of sidewalks, shoulders. The streets are narrow, especially, I saw that Center Street, they have a lot of curves. I know from driving and seeing cyclists, I do worry about their safety because it's difficult to get around them, like you can't necessarily get around them. Based on the information we received, it seems like the Adventure Cycling Association addresses these concerns and mentions the number of cyclists are minimal, right? It wouldn't be like a pack of 20 going down Center Street, right? It's not, that's not the objective. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, actually, that question brings up two really good points. One is the target audience here is long-distance bicycle travelers, so these people are doing week-long tours, month-long tours, certainly several days. So they're experienced riders in that respect. And this is not an event, so we're not talking a big group. If you went out and stood along the road there, and as I said, this is already, the East Coast Greenway has already mapped this out, so there are people already riding it, and you would see 20, 30, 50 local riders and one or two long-distance riders. So there's not going to be any measurable change in the amount of bike traffic on these roads, because as you said, there's already local riders out there riding by themselves, riding a couple, three people, riding in bigger groups. But even if bicycle tourists are in a group that a club has organized, or that a tour company has organized, they start out in the morning, they spread out through the day, again, it's ones and twos. And so you've got a combination of low density compared to local bike traffic and experienced riders who are much more able to deal with the concerns about traffic and sight distances and passing in narrow spaces and so on.
Anything else?
No, that's all that I had, thank you.
Steve?
Just one question. In reading through the memo on the last page, it talks about that there are no requirements, that roads in the U.S. Bicycle Route meet certain guidelines, and then it goes on to say, it is recognized that local engineering judgment will determine when a road is suitable for inclusion in USBR designation. What is that? Can you define local engineering judgment?
Well, basically, if the approving bodies, so if the pavement owners say, hey, yeah, this is okay, it's not perfect, everybody would like something better, everybody would like to spend all their time on a separated path with good tree barriers and good shade and lots of water stops and so on, but that's not reality if you want to ride across the state of Massachusetts. So local engineering judgment is that the pavement owner says, this is acceptable. And long-distance riders realize that when they want to get someplace, they are inevitably going to encounter a wide variety of road quality, again, ranging from low-traffic, quiet rural roads to perhaps even dense city streets. They do have, this route does go through Boston and Cambridge and so on, so there's those kinds of things to deal with. But that's essentially the definition, is that by whatever means, Groveland has said, yeah, this is acceptable.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, a few comments.
Ed, go ahead.
What's that?
Go ahead.
Oh.
It mentions in here that some of this will follow the East Coast Greenway, and I noticed that in some areas here in Groveland, it's already marked out for the East Coast Greenway, which from what I know is a, from Callis, Maine to Key West, Florida. And the eventual goal is to get all of the East Coast Greenway to be off-road eventually, but that'll take a long time. And I don't even think at this point, half of it is off-road down the east coast, but they, I know they do use, utilize roads that have not very many vehicles on them or the lowest possible. But how come you couldn't set this up so it would utilize our rail trails here?
We're certainly open to that. The question is, where do they connect? So we've had that same question, same discussion with a couple of other communities where there's a rail trail, but then how does that connect to the greater East Coast Greenway route?
Well, I thought that, I thought that the part of the, it's supposed to be so that you could bicycle to Boston along the rail trails, pick it up in Topsfield and through Danvers.
It does.
But am I correct that that's what it would be at some point?
Yeah, so in Topsfield, it picks up the Topsfield Linear Common, and then the Danvers Rail Trail, and then the Danvers Branch, and it starts in Salisbury on the Old Eastern Marsh Trail, and uses big chunks of that, and then it uses the Clipper City Rail Trail. But again, as you point out, and the number you quoted, about less than half of it is currently off-road, it's more like about 20%. And yeah, it's a long ways from that. But, so we're using the East Coast Greenway, we're matching it right along the line, and when new facilities are developed, so a rail trail is extended or a separated pathway is added, then both the East Coast Greenway and the U.S. Bike Route can be realigned to take advantage of that.
But I didn't see, if you look at the East Coast Greenway, I didn't see it, I didn't see it coming through Groveland. It looked like it went through Newbury Port, Newbury.
It does. Goes through Newbury Port, then West Newbury, and that's where Plummer Spring Road, I believe, is mostly in West Newbury, but then it comes on to Seven Star Road, and then et cetera, et cetera, Center Street, Rollins Street, King Street, West Main Street, and Georgetown as it heads down to the Topsfield Linear Common.
Okay, thank you.
It's possible. I've used Google Maps, which I've used Google Maps, which we all know is semi-unreliable, to find the boundaries of the various municipalities along the route. And so as I look at where the route goes, look at where the East Coast Greenway goes, and I look at the Groveland boundary, this list of roads is what I have figured out is Groveland's responsibility, which it certainly could be wrong.
Well, like at some point, you go on to, you go on to Center Street, I'm looking for the...
So there's essentially a jog on Rollins?
Yeah.
So Seven Star Road.
That's not the center.
It's, total distance on Plummer Spring Road is about 5.6 miles. Then it takes a 10th mile turn on Seven Star Road, does a tiny jog, or picks up half a mile on Center Street, does a tiny jog on Rollins, does another half mile on Center Street, and does about a mile and a half on King Street and into Georgetown on West Main.
Okay, I'm all set. Thank you.
Anything else, Steve?
Nope.
In terms of signage, is there going to be any additional signage put up?
So signage is a completely separate issue, and signage is not required. I think one of your, one of the questioners said there are some East Coast Greenway signs up. The key question that always comes up relative to signage is, who's buying? Who's got the funding for it? And to my knowledge, the, so U.S. Bike Route 7 on the western side of the state is also the Western New England Greenway, so it was already signed for that, and I don't believe that there have been any U.S. Bike Route signs added. But once the route is designated, that can be a discussion with both Mast dot and then, of course, local communities, but the challenge is always finding the money for the signs. It's about, and there's a wide range of the signage cost because of all kinds of reasons that we could spend time talking about, but it's about $1,000 per intersection for every turn, because you need a sign set before the turn and a sign set after the turn in each direction, and they're about 250 bucks apiece. Again, the cost can range quite a bit over, because of, you know, who puts them up, who pays for them, and all kinds of reasons like that, but that's, finding the funding is always a significant challenge for signage.
Okay, so you don't have any, you're not planning on putting up any additional signs at this time?
No.
Did you have a question?
No, there's no signage project, no signage project down the horizon that I'm aware of.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Great, hi. So my question is, I just wanted to hear part of the discussion before kind of formulating my thoughts. You spoke about that you're looking at mapping this route, and I'm wondering if you have actually ridden a bike on the route in Groveland that you're leaning towards? I mean...
No, no, I'm not, I'm not, I don't live anywhere near you guys. I'm going on, depending on the East Coast Greenway as being the preferred route. And we're in partnership with the East Coast Greenway, so it's not like they don't know we're doing this.
Right.
They've provided me with a huge amount of information, and they're very supportive of us co-designating the East Coast Greenway and U.S. Bike Route 1.
Right, so where you have them traveling on the Center Street and King Street, we also have residents walking, children, and this and that, and there are no sidewalks, and there's also kind of blind turns. So I just wondered, one of the other members raised the fact that we have a rail trail, that are you trying to keep them in like a green space with winding roadway, or are you opposed to bringing them through the square of town and then up to the rail, the paved trail that would cut through to the bottom of King Street and then let them out onto the Main Street to Georgetown? I mean, that, we just finished that, which is, it's very pretty, but it would, it would make, be a go-around, it wouldn't be a direct. And they would have to go through the square, which is an intersection.
We're completely open to that, that's, again, why we want local engagement. If you guys have got a specific alignment suggestion that through Rebecca or that, or, excuse me.
Honestly, it just occurred to me just listening to both, all the other members on my board speak about this, that I don't know if this, I'm just trying to like think, you know, do you want them on the winding, green tree route the whole way, or are you adverse to them coming down to a Main Street and coming through the square to get up onto the rail trail? It's a bit out of the way to get there, but it would put you on a protected trail instead of King Street.
Again, if that's what you all recommend, then that's a change that can be made. The, the East Coast Greenway is not the most direct route across Massachusetts anyway, so that's, I'm assuming we're talking an extra half a mile or something, you know, that would be just a few minutes of bike riding. The only question I would have there is, so you mentioned a sidewalk, there's width issues, there's speed issues, there's, you know, people with dogs on leashes, people with strollers, people on rollerblades, joggers, et cetera. And so all that stuff needs to be balanced out. But absolutely, your local judgment should weigh in here. And again, if through Rebecca or Annie, somebody wants to send me a specific proposed alignment, I'd be happy to look at it.
Is this something that we could ask the, maybe the town planner to look at in terms of the map, currently proposed map, and then potentially rerouting it to use the rail trail? Would that...
We can certainly ask, for sure.
The real question becomes is how far up the rail trail would we send them? All the way up to Main Street?
Right, that's, I was thinking like down to Main Street, and then they could come up all the way to the bottom of King Street, right? It goes right across. Center Street, there's a crossover, and then you come out into King Street. At least, that's what my husband, my husband wrote it, so he told me that, where he ended up.
So would this go up to State Highway 113? I'm looking for the map here, but I'm not familiar enough with your roads. I mean, King Street goes all the way almost down to the river.
This would be probably like, I'd have to look at the mapping because I'm not the best at them, but coming up Seven Star, at some point you would cut down over to Main Street to get through the down, the square, yeah. Little bit, maybe a mile or so out of the way.
Yeah.
Sort of.
It just, Seven Star, it just jogs a tiny bit, and then it turns on to Center Street. And Center Street basically takes it from Seven Star to King Street.
Right, and it's that part of the route that I think is a little difficult for shared road space.
Yeah.
You know?
And so where would the, where would the alternative be? Would it be good to go most of the way to the river and then cut across and then come back?
That's sort of what I'm talking about, yeah, sort of, I mean, you know, I'm open, I don't want to take away from what you're planning, I'm very supportive of this whole idea, I think it's wonderful, but I'm just wondering if it might be more enjoyable to be able to cut up the rail trail.
Again, you know, you asked a key, you asked, you asked a key question of me, have I ridden in this? And I have not. I've been in, I've ridden in New England a fair bit, but I'm not from around there, as they say. So you guys have a better suggestion, and again, looking at all the trade-offs as to what might work, we're open to that, and that's feedback we could also give to the East Coast Greenway folks.
Or they could stay on, I'm thinking, come down Seven Star, all the way down, come along there. It's not as pretty a river road there.
And then get up on Main Street here and just go.
Go, get on the rail trail off of Main, yeah. And it would take them all the way over to the bottom of King.
Yep.
Yeah. And so then they would have...
Yeah, so it's a mile, essentially it's a mile between Seven Star and King Street. And it looks like if you went up, went north on Seven Star and then came across, I mean, let me just see if I can see where the, where the, I've got to get my map to a certain state so I can see bike paths. Yeah, it's my map, Google Maps essentially is not, let's see if OpenStreetMap shows any bike paths. So yeah, neither Google Maps nor OpenStreetMap is showing bike paths, so that's something that you guys would have to show me.
I'm trying to think if it's before or after the solar field. He asked the solar field, is that what that is or not? Am I wrong? I'm probably wrong. Is that the solar field?
Rebecca's showing the map.
Yeah, right there, that's, that thing with the flashes.
After the solar field, if you're coming from here, you pass the solar field first.
Do you? Oh, yeah.
Because it's right before the water department.
Okay, okay. So it's right after the solar field, so it's right...
And I think, I think what you would be trading is the stretch on, if you have them come back down Seven Star, you have the same challenges as you do on the strip as on Center Street.
Well, because Seven Star is better, much better visibility, it's wider, it's not as many blind, Seven, Center Street up there where Stickney's Boulder and all that, there's some fairly blind curves there. Same with King Street. King Street is, and King Street with the additional developments going in is, you know, growing in capacity for housing. I don't know, it was just a thought, you know, to kind of loop them into our rail trail.
I think it's a great idea.
Loop them into our, we're so proud of our rail trail.
I understand. Could you, could you describe for me where it is?
It's past that, see the solar field, the slat?
It's past that, see the solar field, the slashy things? Yep, is it past Zachary Path?
She has her arrows on it, see?
Yeah, okay.
The arrow's on it right there.
We need a big pointer stick.
Yes, laser pointer.
Yeah.
This is Bagnell.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's west of State Route 97?
Yeah. Yes.
So, it's, it's this, it goes north of the solar panels and then comes down to the, the intersection there of Center Street and King Street?
Before it, okay, see?
Yep, so first you cross Center Street and 97, and then it brings you right to King Street. So, you enter it at Main Street, and then it goes down, and you'll cross 97. Once you cross 97, then it'll take you right to King Street.
We have a blinking light there, don't we?
Yes. Yes, we have a crosswalk, a good crosswalk.
We have a crosswalk for the bike path.
So, yeah, so Google Maps shows that bike path going a little bit south of Center Street, but not all the way down to West Main?
You cross School Street, and you pick it up, and you go into the end of King Street, right by where Old Jacobs runs into it, right? Am I right, Rebecca? By where King Street and Old Jacobs intersect?
Based on your map, it goes right to the red line. I see it, like, at the bottom of your map.
Okay.
The rail trail crosses.
So, would you, and where would, where would you pick it up, then? How would you get, you go up Seven Star into town?
Into, down, down to the square, yeah. And that's Main Street along the river. It's actually really pretty there, too, that's, after you get through the intersection, that's a very popular walk. There's a sidewalk there.
And it's one-way.
And it's one-way.
For part of it.
So, it'd be a split, depending on which direction they go. Are they going to go down Main Street, or if they're going the other way, they're going to go...
Yeah, because...
That's true. I'd go Main. It's pretty around there.
You can't, it's one-way.
There's...
What if you go in...
Well, as I said...
They're coming from Seven Star.
If you guys have got a, if you guys have an alternative suggestion, and somebody could send me a map or detailed distances, Q sheet kind of thing, it's up, it's up to, it's up to Groveland to say, this is where we want.
Okay, thanks.
So, if that's, if that's consensus on your end...
The way the map is, is, is set up, now, correct me if I'm wrong, it, it looks like it's to keep the bicycles to roadways that are less traveled by vehicles. It keeps them off of 97, and it keeps them off of 113, which...
Yep.
Which is, I think that's the goal. I, I think the way this is set up, it's, it's not bad. It, it keeps them on the roads that are not very heavily traveled. You want to keep them off of 97, heavily traveled road. You want to keep them off of 113, going down through, towards West Newbury. I, I think the way you'll have this set up, it's the roads that, that don't have very much traffic on it, am I correct? That, that's what your goal is, to keep them off of the heavily traveled roads?
Well, the goal is to provide a pleasant, long-distance bicycle travel route, yeah. So, you trade off traffic, access to services, distance, directness, you trade off all these things and say, okay, if I'm going to ride through here, this is the way I'd do it. And I always joke, if you have two cyclists in a room and you ask them for the best route from A to B, you'll get three answers, but you go through all that, and, and again, if you collectively, if your consensus is, this is the way we ought to do it, then let me know.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I agree with you there.
Alternatively, if you look at this and say, oh, on balance, yeah, the East Coast Greenway got it right, we'll stick with this, that's fine, too.
And it also keeps the, the, the speed limits are way down as well.
Keeps the what?
The speed limits are way down, too, so you're not subjecting to...
Well, they should be.
Forty miles an hour on a 113, or 97.
They're only on 113, a small portion, and then they're on the rail trail. And the other thing to point out is, they're taking them right down 97 into Georgetown. So, I mean, if you're saying, oh, we're keeping them out of traffic, it's like, you're putting them on blind curves, where there's no shoulder, no sidewalks, nowhere for people who are walking to get out of the way. I, I think, I think there's a...
I think there's plenty of room, because when people are walking, they have cars, they have to avoid, they have to avoid them. If the cars can get around the people, I think a person or bicycle can.
Well, it's just a thought, Jason.
Oh, I agree.
Just to think about it. Maybe we could take it under consideration.
Oh, yeah, no, I think, I think, I'd like to push them up that way, too, but I don't know if it's practical.
You could even skip King Street, have them keep going down Center and pick up the rail trail right there. So, you'd get rid of at least the King Street part of it, which is another, because it was the Center Street and King Street, those were those two concerning, I mean, they're the primary roads of this route, but...
Yeah, and I would add, so the next deadline for this, to designate a US Bicycle Route is in the spring, so we've got, we've got some time. If, if you guys, like I say, if you want to reflux it internally and come to a recommendation, that's certainly more than acceptable.
Bring some crayons to a meeting, and we can put some trails in there.
Go ahead. One more question. I know you mentioned this kind of provides access between West Newbury and Bauxford. Have those two towns also signed on to this already?
I just got started on this last week, or two weeks ago, so, let's see. I had a discussion on West Newbury, because it's part of the, there's a bridge out on Plummer Springs Road, apparently, across the north side of the reservoir.
Yeah, it's been closed for years. It's been closed for years.
That's interesting, because Google Maps let me, when I, just about four or five months ago, they let me put this route together, but now it won't. So, anyhow, so we're talking to them about, about an alternative. So, yes, we've had discussions with them, had discussions with, with Newbury Port, discussions with Georgetown, but so far, only Malden and further south has approved it. But, like I say, I, I started on this two weeks ago.
All right, so the, would the board like to push us off till next meeting, so we can do a little bit more research, and maybe have another discussion, and see if you want to go?
Mm-hmm, that'd be great.
All right, so we'll move it to next weekend, next, next meeting.
Next weekend.
Next weekend. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your time, and, and as I said, Rebecca and Annie, I'm sorry, yeah, Rebecca and Annie have my contact information. If somebody wants to call me up and have a separate discussion, I'm more than happy to take the time to do that. And if you want me to join another meeting where you kind of get out the chalkboard and start drawing lines, I'm happy to do that as well.
Big transparency with the Marcus.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely. All right, so I guess we'll move on to the...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Which is 833 Acceptance of the Conservation. Conservation restriction, 833 Salem Street. Discussion and possible vote to accept the conservation restricted granted by Grantor, 833 Salem Street, Groveland Self-Storage LLC, grantee, Town of Groveland Conservation Commission, property 833 Salem Street, Groveland Essex County, Massachusetts. Title reference Book 41194, page 514, South Essex District Region Registration of Deeds. The conservation restriction covers approximately 1.70845 plus or minus acres of land, being portioned of an approximately 5.1 acre parcel.
In your packet, you have a memo from the town planner, Jonathan Sullivan, and also joining us this evening is the property owner, Brad Legals, as well as his Habitat Specialist, Mark Cooperman, who is up on Zoom.
Yep.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The type of motion, Mr. Chair, that we're looking for is favorable on what you just read?
Would be to accept the conservation restriction.
And do we need to have all that wording, or do you just have to accept it?
You can just, if you'd like to motion to accept the conservation restriction for the property located at 833 Salem Street.
Okay, I'd like to motion to accept the Conservation Commission as described in all those words, located 833 Salem Street.
I'll second that.
Yeah, I read through all the materials, it's a lot of information. It was well put together.
All right, motion is seconded for further discussion. See you now, and call for the vote. All in favor? Done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a side letter of agreement for the Teamsters Union Local 170 Water and Sewer Division. Review and approval of the side letter of agreement establishing the operations manager position and related compensation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this was an item that I had requested to be placed on the agenda, as you'll see in the memo and through previous updates that I had provided to the select board. We were looking to create the operations manager position, because we felt as though it was really important for the continuity within the department, as we had seen our superintendent left. And there's certain licensures and requirements that we must have in order to operate our drinking water system currently, not just with the potential water treatment facility in the future. So, now, more than ever, it became apparent that we needed to have this position in order to make sure that there was that type of continuity within the department, if there was turnover, and to make sure that the drinking water system was being handled properly, again, by those who are certified with a proper licensure to do so. So, in speaking with the union, we had talked about this particular position, and the union is in favor. They did, in fact, take this proposal back, and they did vote to move forward. As you'll see in the memo, we're not looking necessarily to hire a new employee, we would like to promote internally. If the select board agrees and ratifies this side letter of agreement, we will post the position, we were hoping to on Friday, but since that is a recognized holiday, we will not be able to, but we would definitely post the position first thing on Monday. It needs to be posted for 10 days, and then we would like to make an offer to a current employee. Based upon the superintendent's departure, we do have monies in the line items, so we do not feel as though this will impact the budget as well. So, this is something that we feel very strongly about. It is something that will be a long-term goal regardless. And, again, due to the circumstances, we felt as though it was a good time now to get this established.
Sounds good. Anybody have any questions for Rebecca?
Yeah, just, just one, I think. Just reading quickly over this, is there any, this manager or whatever, you have to have the, you have to have the proper licenses to...
Correct.
To run the plant, and, okay.
So, again, that would be, in our opinion, advantageous for us to bring somebody of that nature on now, so that while we're talking about designing the new treatment facility, that person will be able to weigh in on that conversation, because ultimately, that position will be responsible for operating such.
And then, it'd still be a, somebody over that individual?
Correct. The superintendent would still be the, the head of the department, then it would be the operations manager, and then it would be the operators and...
And the head of the department would not have to have the licenses, because this individual does?
Correct.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So, the new position would be a union position, right?
Correct, and that's why it needed to be negotiated as part of the current collective bargaining agreement.
Okay, and the superintendent position is not union?
Correct, they are outside of the union.
So, is this going to impact the job description responsibilities of the superintendent and/or the salary that we offer?
It will not. So, we still advertise the superintendent position with the, well, the current superintendent position responsibilities and job description. So, that was posted back in September, that has not changed. This position will not change the superintendent's jobs, responsibilities, or wage currently.
Okay, and this ballpark-wise, because I didn't have a chance to do it, what is the relationship between the annual salary for this position? This is, is this just water or water and sewer?
This is just for water.
Just water, okay. So, it's full-time in water, which is, aren't all the other positions split a certain percentage?
No, well, they're split in terms of the 70% water, 30%...
Yes, their salaries.
Correct.
Would this be split like that?
Correct, yes.
But, it doesn't have any sewer responsibility?
Correct, so it wouldn't be split, it would be on the water side.
Okay, I know.
So, it would be part of the 70% of the budget that would be allocated towards water, would be, what would be responsible for this particular employee.
So, is this employee still going to have sewer?
Correct.
So, what is, what is the proposed annual for both pieces for this position, then?
So, it's a little bit difficult, because there depends on a lot. There's also the on-call hours that are negotiated as part of the collecting bargaining unit, and there's also OT, and then, so that comes into their cumulative wages. So, the negotiated base rate was for $40.25 for fiscal year '26, so that would begin this year, and then it would increase to $40.75 for next year, and then, again, when...
I saw that, I'm just wondering, what is our, our salary for our superintendent for the year?
I'd have to double-check, I think it's around 104 or 103.
That's what I thought, yeah. So, what is the current, using an approximation, what would be the current salary for this position, more or less, do you think?
I would need to pull it up, I can try and do that, it's just, again, these are not salary employees, they're hourly employees, so if we're taking a closer look at that...
I'm just wondering how close it is to the superintendent's salary.
You're looking at a base of 83.
That's what I'm thinking, so with overtime...
You're looking at about 101,000, or you're looking at about $113,000.
So, this position potentially would earn more than our superintendent. And so, we're having trouble, I guess, that's what I'm coming back to, and I'm mixing, I know I'm mixing apples and oranges, I get that. But, I am concerned that we lost our superintendent to a much higher salary, right, in neighboring town. And we still think we're going to be able to fill a superintendent position at this rate with a man, somebody who's in the union earning more or less the same or more, right?
I think we can fill the position now with a water and sewer superintendent position. I do think that you bring up a good point, that if we're looking to hold on to that individual, we will need to increase the salary in the upcoming budget. But, that's for fiscal year '27. But, I do think that we'll get a candidate for the current advertisement as-is.
All right, I'm just, I'm just wondering, are we, so, are we doing any kind of a salary study here to figure out how to align, realign all this? Because now you're going to have a manager earning clearly more than the superintendent, until we do something about that.
Well, there's nothing I can do, because we'd have to wait until a town meeting in order to...
Yes, no, I understand.
I'm just trying to work within the constraints that I have. And so, again, I do think that this is the best course of action in terms of the overall structure and organization of the department. But, I do hear you and agree, and I have a proposal to increase the salary to be measurable with those surrounding communities of our liking. So, with a smaller 70% on water, no water treatment facility, with a water treatment facility coming online. So, we do have salary data that we will be looking at when we propose our fiscal year '27 budget, but there's nothing I can do right now for the superintendent's salary. So, while I'm looking at the structure, I figured, again, the better course of action was to make sure that we had those people in place, so that we could then add monies to the superintendent's salary as needed.
Right. So, this position coming on now, though, is primarily water quality, is going to be essentially the biggest...
Operating the water system as it is.
Yes, and, and water quality, right, so, and that's, that would mean that the superintendent would not have to be licensed in that. Is the superintendent now currently responsible for that?
To some extent, yes. But, at the same time, if you're just looking at the base salary, you're only looking at about $89,000, which is under the superintendent's salary. The only reason that the salary exceeds the superintendent's salary...
I know, it's overtime.
Is the on-call stipends and the overtime.
Right, I get that.
So, that's something that's a benefit of a manager, not having to be called out at 1:00 in the morning, and not having to be made available whenever it's need, whenever there is needed, because they're on call. So, there are benefits to being a salaried employee versus an hourly union employee.
Right.
So, but your point is, again, well-taken, that we need to increase the superintendent's salary 100%, but I just don't have the ability to do so now, and this opportunity presented itself, and from an organizational structure, it just made sense to do that, and also show... and also show good morale with the current employees as to giving them the stability and continuity that they're looking for, to see that the department is moving forward.
Right. No, and it makes sense. Your description makes a lot of sense, and I do support it. I just wanted to understand a little better, because I know, you know, we lost the superintendent, and that's a big blow while all this work is going on.
He did go to a place that already had a facility up and running, so that's one of the reasons why the position was paying so much more. Because we didn't have that, and we're not up and running yet. So there's a little bit of difference.
Okay. That's all. I appreciate the time. I just like to, I like to understand before I vote on things.
Anybody else have any questions?
Did I misunderstand you? I thought you said that this would just for water and not sewers.
For the operations standpoint, yes.
But yet it says that here, under education experience, additional licenses, including a Massachusetts wastewater collection systems operator one license. If it's not going to have anything to do with wastewater, then why would that be in there?
They still deal with wastewater.
So it's not just...
Well, the employee, again, would still have the 70/30 split, so they'd still be required to take care of the sewer system and the responsibilities. But with our agreement with HABRIL, that's more limited based upon what we have for the infrastructure. So the operations component, when you're leading the operation of the drinking water and the treatment, is a different role than when you're dealing with the sewer system and the wastewater system.
That's as clear as mud.
Many hats in a small department.
Well, the change is primarily for the water side, and then the existing, we have only so many staff, only so many modern sewer employees, so we have to continue to fill the sewer side of it with that person's time for whatever has to be done, right? That's what we're talking about. But the promotion, the additional movement up is on the water side. That makes sense. I think you explained it well. Thank you.
I agree. Any other questions? Good. So does somebody want to make a motion to ratify the agreement?
Is that the word we use on this?
You believe. Correct? We're ratifying this?
Just to ratify the side letter of agreement.
Okay, so make a motion to ratify the agreement as presented tonight.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? See you now and call for the vote. All in favor? Unanimous. And next, we have the Attorney General's Discussion on Town Meeting Warrants.
Can we dispense with the reading? Like we do at town meeting? Did you see all the pages? Goes on and on. I mean, it was pretty clear to reading through it that more or less everything went through. Maybe a couple of tidy-ups, maybe the council needing things to go back to town meeting. But other than that, no big surprises.
Correct.
And we got the letter from the ELOC, if I said that right, right?
Correct.
So that's good. Thank you. That was, that was a big hurdle to get that done.
Yeah, I think it was, you had brought up Article 10?
Yeah, 10 was the Council on Aging and that date, but it sounds like that's just something we just have to revise at the next town meeting?
Correct. And it'll be a simple, not very long lengthy article.
Yes.
Nice and smooth.
So we should maybe let, did, I suppose, are you doing some kind of an announcement or something that the, about, you know, we've satisfied this requirement that, on the housing, setting aside that parcel of land is acceptable, and the Executive Office of Housing, I forget all their letters. Executive, I just call them Executive Office of Housing. They've approved our, they've approved our plan as well, so we're, we're pretty much going to move forward now without worrying about that.
Correct.
Okay, that's good.
And then, have you discussed Article 24 with Sam on their concern about the language making it impractical or impossible for developers to implement battery energy storage systems?
Yes, we have spoken about that, and we do anticipate more guidance coming down from the state regarding that particular issue. So we are aware, and we have discussed, that there could be some problems with the way that it's currently drafted.
Okay, because I know there's been some pushback from some other towns, just on the environmental end.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could say, I appreciate that the building inspector put in that safeguard, though, because for residents, this keeps those, the building of those large battery storage facilities away from housing. That was the intention. So they can't just come to an empty lot by your home and buy it and build this there, right? So if we have to ease up on that, certainly we'd like to have some kind of a forum on that to know how much we're easing up, right?
And that's why it's been a very back-and-forth conversation with the state, because there are certain protections for solar battery energy storage, which exempts them from zoning and other regulatory requirements that the local government may impose. And so that's to what the chair had been mentioning, reasonable, and what do they deem reasonable. And there has been a lot of back-and-forth with the state and communities about that.
Okay, and are these battery storage, are they just primarily solar? Are they storage of other energy source?
It's another energy source. It's just that it's an exemption like solar. There's certain things that are exempt from zoning, and it's called, it's called the Dover Act that exempts certain things from zoning.
Correct.
You don't have to go through the zoning process. They don't, the zoning, like a 40B, it's not applicable to certain things, and that's solar, battery energy storage, group homes and things of that nature. And then there's another, religious institutions is another one. They're exempt from going through the process. So just like solar, battery energy storage is exempt from going through this process. In certain procedures, you're not allowed to impose that upon somebody who's looking to permit that in a particular area.
Right, I just, my concern is, my understanding of these battery storage things, they can be as large as a Mack truck, right? And if there's a fire or any problem with them, it's significant. It's not, not like a group home or a church having a fire. And that would be the reason, I thought the fire chief also signed on with what we voted at town meeting because of that.
I believe the town, the chief had signed on because of the additional safety restrictions that are inherent within the batteries.
Correct.
Prevent a thermal runaway. And I know that through doing some research, some of the towns have had their fire chiefs come up and speak, and their biggest concern is thermal runaway. So it is a bit contentious across a lot of areas. So as, as they get more information from the state, and we deal with that, and Sam deals with that, I mean, he definitely steers us in the right directions and looks out for the town.
And they're looking for alternative energy sources, so that's why they're looking at it. The state is looking upon it more favorably, because it's just another energy source.
No, it allows us to store energy during the downtimes when we're not paying so much. And then during peak times, we can draw on against it, yeah.
Right, I understand what it is. I worked in the industry. But my concern still is with such a small town. I thought that the bylaw or whatever that we passed made a lot of sense as far as fire safety and safety for our residents, and you certainly wouldn't want this next to a school. Certainly wouldn't want it next to a playground or an athletic field, or a place where people are constantly walking, right? It's not like a solar field. It's not static. It's, it's, you know, like, put a transformer in my backyard or something, right? I'm just concerned, I'm just wondering, is our town planner involved in this at all at any level?
So we've imposed the regulations that you've seen, the zoning bylaw that was passed and adopted at the town meeting. The Attorney General, right now, has approved that, and that's what's governing the permitting process of battery energy storage. If that were to change in the future, we will hear from the state, and the state will ask us to update our regulations to reflect any or other regulations that they change at the state level. But for right now, what you see as part of what was approved at the annual town meeting in April, that is what governs the permitting aspect of battery energy storage.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Do we, so I understand that they approved it, but in the memo that they sent, they talk about a change that's happening in March of 2026 to the permitting process? Have we looked into what that change is and whether it's going to impact the bylaw?
So that's why we don't know, until they come out with that, whatever that is.
But it sounds like it's already been, the permitting requirements have already been established. They just go into effect in March.
We can double-check, but to my understanding, we were compliant.
Okay.
But I'll double-check with Sam and see if anything has changed since that was released.
Okay. Yeah, and then the other, the other thing I wanted to ask about is, it also talks about the draft information that was released on September 26, 2025. Have we, do we know if we've looked at that? Again, just to try and stay ahead of whatever changes that they may be making?
Which one, for the battery energy storage?
Uh, yeah, it talks about, it basically, let me just find it again. Says, "As part of this new legislation, dear has been tasked with drafting regulations and guidance. On September 26, 2025, the Clean Energy Sitting Division published draft regulations, 225 CMR 29, Small Clean Energy Infrastructure Facility, citing and permitting." Have we looked at, have we done a review of that to understand what impact it may have on the bylaw in its current state? I know it's only draft regulations, but just thinking about how we stay ahead of that.
I will need to follow up with the building commissioner on that. I do know he's following it more closely, but the last conversations that I had with him, we were...
Yeah, the March change concerns me more, because that's an actual, the other, the September 26 seems to be just when they released the, some additional information. I'm just concerned if we're going to run into any issues in March primarily, but...
I will circle back with Sam, and I will get an answer for you all.
Yeah, because I mean, like the Attorney General said, it could be considered a violation. If it's considered a violation, then that would take our bylaw and throw it out.
Right.
So it's important to reevaluate and continue to work with everything, and I know Sam is really good at that. I'm sure he's already doing it.
It'd just be good to understand what the potential change is affecting.
I agree. Any other discussion about this? Since we have none, we'll go ahead and move on to the Christmas and New Year's holiday schedule.
Already here, huh?
So the only reason I had to put this on the agenda is a couple of employees had approached me this year. Christmas and New Year's Day fall on a Thursday, and with town hall only being open half-day on Friday, and with the majority of employees seeking that day off or not working on Fridays, they had asked whether or not the select board would be willing to close town hall and the library for those days.
That would be the 26th and the 2nd?
Correct.
So do they have Christmas Eve off?
We have a half-day on Christmas Eve.
Oh.
And that's per our personnel policies and procedures handbook.
Okay. Well, I certainly would vote in favor of Friday off, with Christmas like that on a Thursday and the same with New Year's.
The board has done so in the past. How does that affect the rates that we pay our water and our hall and our highway department?
It won't, it won't impact their, their rates, per se. Like, you mean for overtime?
When town hall is closed, don't they get additional pay?
So when we close town hall, they get an additional day off.
Oh.
So it's not a rate. It's, they get an additional day off.
It was, that was an old contract thing, I think, Jason, you're thinking of. I know where you're coming, I know where you're coming from. It's from a way back day, yeah. No, this is, I'll make a motion, yes, in favor of closing the town hall and the library on December 26 and...
January 2nd.
January 2nd.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yep.
Unanimous? And now we'll give a quick discussion about the Whittier Regional Working Group.
Okay, and so as, as before, I'm an employee still of Whittier Regional School District, so I'll accuse myself.
I don't really have much to update the board on. I was very disappointed in our last meeting. The letter that we had already voted on to send off to the, to DESA to try to get them to consider our previous eligibility study on the school itself, instead of redoing that and paying to have it done again, had not been sent to any of the other boards for approval. Everybody just sort of didn't do anything with the information. So I was, I was very disappointed in that, because I was hoping that we would have moved forward beyond that already. So back to what a friend that was here said, it's going to be a very long and tedious process to go through the agreement, which we haven't even begun to do, really. I did come across the regional agreement for Minuteman, and I do recommend going through that. So next time we do have that conversation, we can, we can maybe have a fresh look and some more ideas. They did, and Minuteman discussed utilizing a formula for the capital side. But again, they didn't really talk about it on the tuition side, which I was confused, because I was trying to go back through the law and find where the tuition side was governed by the formula. And I didn't find anything that it was. But it was clear to the case. That's all I really had, unless anybody else has any other questions. Unless Rebecca would like to add anything? No, it was, it was pretty...
It was a very short meeting.
Yeah, and it was very uneventful. I was very disappointed.
I saw them talking about communication, so I'm going to assume that they'll, at some point, have a website dedicated to the building project?
The building project? Yeah, I do believe.
Okay.
The building project, I think, is going to be different, because they have a building committee.
Right.
And I think they did have a meeting, building committee.
They just had the building committee meet, I want to say, last Tuesday, I believe it was?
And I remember there was an article from HABRIL on that.
Okay.
That everybody was sort of surprised that the chair had been picked before the committee even met. The chair and vice chair, so that was...
Scandalous.
Yeah, very interesting.
Yeah, because I know once they have that site, that's when we can put the link on our site, right? And I think one thing that would be helpful is kind of listing who's representing Groveland as far as the project goes. Because I think something that was brought up, especially during the last Whittier building discussion, is it felt like we were blindsided. So I think having that sort of, being upfront, we got you, Jason, we have Adam, right? And then even like the school committee member possibly, just to sort of like, hey, we have...
Three of those.
Yes, having, these are the Groveland representation of, for this initiative, I think, could be helpful, maybe alleviate some angst with us, with residents feeling that we're, we don't have a seat at the table, you know?
Yes, which, which we do, and we did last time as well. It's just a matter of getting the information out there. It's always difficult to get the information out there, because how do you get it out there? Right? I mean, we, we do talk about it at the meetings here. We post it like we're supposed to do, all by law, and so do they. So there's, there's a lot of talk about trying to get out more information. I know I've been pushing the Whittier letters out, the newsletters, posting as much as possible, encouraging people to go ahead and subscribe to that, because that's where you're going to get a lot of the information. And they have good information about what the school's done, what it's doing, and what's up, what's coming up. So I definitely recommend that. And realistically, I mean, it used to be, you wake up, you get your newspaper, and you go through it. Well, you don't have a newspaper anymore. Now you get up, you open up your laptop, you hit some websites. And one of them should be the town of Groveland.
Right.
To see what events are coming up, what meetings are coming up, and what the agendas are, so you can see if it's something that you need to be involved in and interested in looking at and going to. And I think when more and more people move from that mindset, like they used to do with the newspaper, I think it would be very beneficial for everybody. So, yes, Ed?
You were at the meeting, and Rebecca, what's the consensus that all the other communities would agree to change in the Whittier agreement?
Right now, it's 100%.
Because I know HABRIL was, HABRIL was blocking at it.
Originally, they were, because they didn't want to lose the extra 20% attendance versus what they would have to pay in capital, because that would be a huge hit on their, their budget, especially since they have so many students there. But they've come completely around, so they're absolutely willing to open up their agreement and have full discussion. They have hired an attorney to represent them during these discussions. So, which I think is good, because like we saw when we spoke to attorneys before... Which I think is good because, like we saw when we spoke to attorneys before, the attorneys usually try to go for, uh, the best reasonable end outcome for everybody. So, 'cause if it's not gonna be reasonable, it's not gonna, it's not gonna fly. So I think it's, uh, gonna be beneficial for everybody.
And any additional cost to the communities if, if this is changed?
If what is changed, the agreement?
Yes. I thought that's what we're talking about.
I don't believe we would know what the additional costs would be for the agreement, or if it'd be less. Just depends on how they word capital expenses. I mean, right now, with the amount of students that we have, with the seat allocation, we're not gonna get back up to the four-point-seven percent of what our capital expenses were responsible for. Um, so if it's done based on enrollment, then, uh, then it wouldn't matter. So potentially, it would cost less if we have less people enrolled.
No, that's, that's, that's it for now.
But yeah, in terms of a direct cost, it'd be very difficult to, to specify, 'cause the agreement itself is just so broad and, and lengthy. Any other questions?
His, I, I think, I mean, I know we talked a little bit last time about the agreement and kind of changes we would potentially see. Um, have they formalized what that process is actually gonna look like of submitting those and what the timeline is?
No, they, they did formalize the timeline because there's a hard timeline deadline for, uh, when we have to have the new agreement. Um, I don't remember what that is. Um, but yeah, no, I was hoping they would have done that at this last meeting, and that's one of the reasons why I was just very disappointed, because it was still talking about the letter and, and everybody spoke up and said, well, we have to bring it back to our respective boards or, and it just, it's just like, well, you should have already done that.
Right.
We did it. I mean, that's just, I thought that was a given. We all agreed, yes, it's a good thing, let's bring it back to our boards, but they didn't do that. So, so we didn't get to go forward and play that out.
And the next meeting is, is it December seventeenth, I see it here?
Uh, originally, I believe it was gonna be December eighteenth, but I think it may have changed because they reclassified the group.
Okay.
Um, and these new meetings will be posted, and there will be public meetings. So it won't be just a subcommittee, it'll actually be a committee. I'm not sure if that's gonna be a good thing or a bad thing in terms of slowing it process down even further.
Time will tell.
And to Becky, uh, Select Board Member Boucher's point, I, we, Annie and I have been working on a webpage that clearly identifies the two separate paths that are going on, in addition to information about Whittier Tech, whether it be their newsletter or their building committee newsletter. Um, so we are working to do that, and we do expect to link the meetings, any recordings, minutes, et cetera, just so that we can make sure that we're getting that information out to the public sooner rather than later.
Right.
As the process starts, so it's not all of a sudden towards the end like last time, where is the information? It was on their website, and we kind of are late to the game. So we are working on making sure that that is very transparent as well.
Great.
I'll post it on Facebook and tell all your friends.
TikTok.
Soon as they start talking about it, and, uh, and maybe the word will actually get out.
Yeah.
Yes, Ed?
Any discussion on how Whittier representatives are gonna be chosen?
For?
School committee. The Whittier representatives?
No, not yet. It's part of the agreement. No, but in the, in the Minuteman agreement, it does specify that the select board is the people that, that will pick the committee for their regional vocational school.
That's what I'm getting at, because right now, most of the municipalities that, that are in there, from what I've read, it, it's done by the, uh, by the school committee. They, they name it, and it, uh, and some of them, it goes back to, uh, goes back to the board.
Yeah, it's, it's the school committee that chooses right now. That's the way it is, that's the way it has been. That's the way a lot of them are, looking at Essex and, and things like that, rely on the school committee, because like I've said in the past, I mean, that's, that's who handles the educational process, where the select board doesn't. So that's, that's where I would prefer it to be, but again, it's not like I'm gonna make the decision, so it's something that has to be made for all of us, at least the four of us here, for, for Groveland anyway. But if it ends up in the agreement that way, I know that, uh, I'm definitely the minority, not only on this board and that, but also as the other ten communities. The city, I don't think the cities really care because the mayors are on the committee anyway. So they're, they're the ones that pretty much pick who is gonna be. So, anything else?
No.
All right, great. So, uh, you can come on back. And with that, we have the approval of the minutes for October fourteenth and October twenty-seventh.
If you could hold on one second, I found a few things, just to.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Which ones are those? So many pages. Eighty-five pages.
Mm-hmm.
Um, page seventy-six.
Uh, thank you, yeah, I finally found it. Okay, so. So is the first one, is the first one October fourteenth, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay, and on that one. Yes, I just think, um, when I recuse myself on the line D under Whittier, just, um, due to my status as an employee of Whittier Regional School District, should be added. There should be a reason for the recusal.
So you would like that added?
Yes, please.
Any other corrections?
Not on that one, no. And wait a minute, let me just make sure. Yeah, no one's fine other than that.
Becky, you good?
I'm good. I just, I was not in attendance for the October twenty-seventh one, so.
All right, but you're good with the, the fourteenth?
Yes.
All right, so I'll take a motion for the, uh.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of Oc- Tuesday, October fourteenth, is that right? Twenty twenty-five, yes.
With the change?
With the amendment, yeah, the, with the amendment that, uh, Catherine Castrenellis recused herself from this discussion due to her status as an employee of Whittier Regional School District.
I'll second it.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? I don't see any other call for the vote. All in favor? Unanimous? And for the twenty-seventh?
Um, yes, so again, a small little thing, um. Okay, I abstained from the approval of the minutes of Au- August eighteenth, as I was not at that meeting. And then it says, and there was no one absent. I think it's meant to say, and one absent in the vote, recording of the vote, under approval of the minutes at the end of the minute. So to, the change would be, um, Castrenellis abstained as she was not at the meeting. I guess you'd say, and one absent, so it's three, zero, one, and one absent, instead of no one absent, to strike the word no. Okay. And I think that was it. On that. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of Monday, October twenty-seventh, with that change under item six. Fourth sentence.
Okay, motion is second. Any further discussion?
I'm going to abstain because I was absent.
Sounds good. All in favor? Four in favor and one abstention. I don't see any all or unfinished business.
Nope.
Any other items not reasonably anticipated at the time of posting?
I did have one matter come up. Um, it will be something that we can add to the next agenda, um, for a formal vote, since I know you're not able to take a formal vote under this particular agenda item, but I was, uh, contacted by Melissa Montan- Montanaro with VZ Memorial Park or Friends of VZ Memorial Park about advertising the Makers Market, um, and wanting to put a banner up on the Shanahan Fields fence. So I'm not sure if there would be any particular concern with them utilizing that location. I did let her know that I would need to have a formal vote in order to offer official approval, but whether or not that location would be problematic to the board.
It's not problematic from my point of view. We allow banners on the corner downtown for town events.
And that's with the, um, Penticat Arts Foundation, it's just gonna.
Oh, I'm sorry, correct. Yes, going to be at VZ, and it'll be December sixth. So our next meeting's the eighth, which.
Yeah.
Is before our next meeting on December eighth. So that's why I think I could ask if the location would be problematic and put it on our next agenda for an official vote.
What do you think, Ed?
Yeah, I, I, I think we, we need to take a look at the size of the sign and, and if we can really determine where it's gonna be.
Steve?
I have no concern at this point.
Yeah, I don't have a concern either.
May I ask a question? Um, when we revised the town administrator and we did the bylaw, you don't have the authority to signage for.
Changed for field use permits and special events, and it was only those under certain thresholds for, you know, special events under a hundred or something of that nature.
Okay, I just, 'cause to me, it would make the most sense for the town administrator, who knows how many people are asking for banners and can see the size of them when we can't, to be able to handle that going forward, as long as we're in agreement on that.
We'll be able to consult the building inspector who, who, who governs over that anyway, on a regular basis.
We could put it on the next agenda if you'd like.
Yeah, I would, 'cause I just, this has come up before, right? And it's always, you know, 'cause we meet every two weeks, this is why we made the town administrative bylaw to allow the town administrator to get things done when we're not around.
Sounds very reasonable to me.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it might be good to also talk about setting some guidelines about timing of those requests, 'cause it does seem like they come in fairly last minute.
I think it's 'cause no one knows how to do it. I mean, they see the signs go up, and if you're in the, if you're on the end, then you know, but if you're not on the end, then you don't know.
Yeah, that might be, that's why I think it might be good to set some guidelines.
But I think the timing wouldn't be a problem if the town administrator could approve, unless it's a ginormous sign that's gonna block, you know, the whole, uh, the whole soccer field out, um, and it doesn't require additional building things to put it up. Um, putting a s- a banner for a short period of time on a fence is part of us knowing what's going on in a small town. It's how we find out. We drive by a fence.
But I'm okay with the sign going up.
Me too.
Yep.
Fair enough. So with that, I think we can move on to the town administrative time. Rebecca said it was gonna be extra long today.
Oh, good. Yes, it is not. It is brief. Um, I just closed it when I was.
Oops.
Looking for. Let me just pull that back up. One more second, please. So just a couple of things, as the chair mentioned, the, um, I just wanted to update the board. There was a, uh, incident over at the highway department. Uh, the incident occurred on November tenth involving a town employee. The town's primary concern is for the health and well-being of our employee and their family, and out of respect for their privacy, no additional personal details will be released at this time. A full investigation of the incident is being conducted. The town is open, and all parties involved are fully cooperating with the investigation to determine the cause and ensure that all workplace safety protocols are properly maintained. Consequently, at the advice of Town Council, no further information can be shared publicly at this time. I also wanted to update the board for budget instructions. Those were released to the department heads today. All budgets will be due on December thirty-first. Um, copies of the budget request will be shared with the finance board, the select board, and will be made available online. Please note that the actual official budget or proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-seven will not be released until March two thousand twenty-six. Uh, for community preservation, the deadline for filing applications is December first. Um, I'm currently collaborating on the following proposals, as you're aware, Shanahan Fields, restrooms, Washington Park Restrooms, Bagnow Basketball Court and Play Area improvements, the Pines Lighting improvements. And then also, I wanted to let the board know that I will be hosting our fourth annual staff appreciation breakfast, which will be held on December twenty-second at nine a.m. here in the main meeting room, and you are all welcome to attend if you are available. It is just a small way of saying thank you to our employees and all the work that they've done throughout the year. I then have a list of the ongoing projects. Uh, field use property, special event permits, none. Uh, important updates, the Economic Development Committee met this evening, so hopefully we'll have an update on them. There was a small lapse in the meeting. There was a resignation of one of their members, which happened to be the chair, so they did struggle to get into, um, a routine of emailing and getting something on the books, but we'll have a recap for them shortly, and then just a note that town hall will be closed on November twenty-seventh, in honor of Thanksgiving, as well as the day after, November twenty-eighth. For our pro camera, there's none. Technical review content is none, and then there's a list of meetings, seminars, and events that I've attended in the last two weeks.
Anybody have any questions for Rebecca?
Yes, I do.
Yes, Ed?
On item number one, uh, it happened on November tenth. We had a meeting that night. Why wasn't the board notified of, of a problem down there? I know you get a serious accident or a fire, you, you send a text message out to the board. Why wasn't the board notified of, of that either at the time, I don't know what time it was, but, or at least been, been brought up to date with, about the incident on, at the meeting on the tenth?
So I was not made aware of the incident and its severity until November eleventh, so I did not have an update for the board at that time.
And, uh, when the investigation is finished, um, are, are we gonna get a, we gonna be, get a copy of the OSHA report?
I will talk to the town council and figure out exactly what information can be released publicly and what we will need to do behind executive session.
It, um. Okay.
Any other questions for Rebecca?
I just had one, the Washington Salem Street intersection meeting. Did anything come out of that yet?
So they're going back to take a closer look. We had talked about some of the potential grant opportunities that could be made available to us based upon the location. So if you take a look at the intersection, not only from the perspective of the new forty-B project, but also in relation to the MBTA-approved zone, that could also potentially impact the intersection and could open up a funding source through the MBTA Catalyst Fund. So we're looking to see whether or not we could take advantage of that. And then there was other talks of potential development or just even conversations about feasibility studies between forty-six Washington Street, which we received those funds from, um, the earmark from Representative Ramos, as well as the Small Rural Development Fund, and then the work that we've been doing over at one fifty Center Street. So whether or not the correlate, the correlation of the intersection to those particular areas might actually open up more funding for us to do something. They are putting together a conceptual plan, and they are putting together a couple of options, and I, I believe Selectman Naves was there, um, and happened to be around during that day and sat in on the meeting, and there was different options, things that we could do more immediately in terms of signage, and I think some paintings and some markings on the ground that we could do that's easy, and we can get that accomplished now. And then some longer-term improvements that would require a little bit more construction, potential signalization, et cetera. So they'll be drafting a formal technical memo that we'll be sharing with the board, and we can have a, a longer conversation, and I hope to invite them in so that they can present their findings to the board.
Fabulous.
Yes, 'cause the traffic studies said that the, uh, intersection warranted a signal, so now it's just a matter of finding the, uh, funding.
Wow, okay.
Which is what Rebecca's working on.
Okay.
Um, they said the immediate things that they, we can do is to trim the tree, because coming from Washington, the tree blocks the flashing signal, so you can't see it.
Okay.
Um, and there's also a sign that they said needs to be taken down because it blocks a stop sign.
Mm-hmm.
And they said the signs are extremely old, and they don't even have the reflective, uh.
Okay.
So they don't light up when they, when you hit them with the light. And they said those are the things that we can do immediately, as well as painting stop, where in front of the stop sign, stop. And they said it's really, we really work when you're coming down Washington, because you have to go up the hill. So you'll see it right there.
Right, right.
Um, so those are the things we can immediately do that would really benefit that intersection.
Excellent.
So, yeah, it was a really good productive meeting. So I really thank Rebecca for inviting me in. It was good to see.
And then for the quarry apartments, um, are they gonna have residents the beginning of the year? Is that what they're proposing?
That's what it looks. That's what it looks like, and we did just advertise for the lottery.
Yes.
So there is local preference for Groveland residents, Groveland employees, that they can apply for those affordable housing units if they meet the threshold, and they're invited to apply. We did send that out on our Facebook, our website, as well as to the employees here at Town Hall and throughout the town.
Okay, I'd like to do a site visit, too, when it's ready.
I'm waiting for it.
Yes, we were fortunate enough to do one, it's pretty impressive.
What, what do you mean, we?
I didn't get an invite.
Look at the other rep board member.
Another select board member had mentioned traffic concerns along Salem Street and the speeding. So we had reached out to the developer of the quarry apartments and said, for your off-site employ, improvements, you'll be doing a rapid flashing beacon. Where will be, that be located, where is the signage? Because a lot of times, that will help discourage the speeding, if they see the lights and they see the flashing, where are they getting on the bus, and where are they getting off the bus? Because there'll also be a bus stop at that particular location as well. And so Jason was around, so he participated in that. And as part of that, the developer took us on a tour of the development that was going on up on the hill.
I see how that works.
If you're involved, then you're involved.
Well-
But it was very interesting to see, because when we were there, where the bus stop is, it's all concreted, it's ready to go. So it, yeah, it's very, and when they were talking about the signal, they were also talking about consulting with Chesterton, because they wanted to make sure it worked for them as well. So yeah, it was good to see that type of collaboration between the builder and our businesses as well.
So as far as our ability to be invited for a site visit, is that an inappropriate request to make? Or are we allowed, we allowed to see this place?
You're, I, I can ask the developer, I'm sure that he would be fine.
Ask them, yes.
Yes, and make sure the developer tells the onsite manager.
What, go ahead, say it.
He gave us permission to be there, because when he left, the onsite manager came over and said, hey, you guys can't be here.
Oh, no.
You have to be invited in order to participate on a site visit, but we can reach out to the developer and arrange such, if that's what you would like.
And I'm sure he'd be very happy to show it off.
It sounds wonderful, I mean, that's what I've heard about it, having not been there, like some members of the board, you know. But otherwise, I've heard really good things.
I, I promise, that wasn't the point of our site visit, it was to look at the off-site improvements.
Sure.
Is that, is that Salem Street going to be paved before winter?
Not before winter.
So they got to go through another winter of that minefield over there, it should have been done last year.
So they still have to put the off-site improvements, they still have to put up the rapid flashing beacon, so we still have some other things that need to be done. So we're hesitant to actually pave that roadway at this point in time, but it will be something that will be included in our upcoming plans.
Yes, and Chesterton is also talking-
It was going to be done in the spring.
Chesterton is also talking about hooking up to the sewer. And if they do that, they're going to do that on Salem Street.
So they're going to dig it up again.
Yeah, so you want to, you want to move off until that gets all situated and settled as well. So that becomes a, an issue. Any other questions for Rebecca?
Just any update, or when, can we expect an update on the status of the new trash contract?
So, yes, proposals were due, we received two proposals. So we are reviewing those proposals now and taking a closer look at next steps.
All right, with that, we'll move on to select board time. Ed?
I, I don't have anything.
Steve?
Just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Becky?
Same, wish Groveland residents a happy Thanksgiving, and express my heartfelt thanks to our town employees and volunteers for making this wonderful place home, thank you.
Yep, same, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, hope everybody has some restful time. I hope our, our town employee who got injured is doing better, honestly hope that. And I asked Rebecca to include the, I keep forgetting their name, is it Memory Lainers? I have bits of the group, so that, that is headed up, for those of you not familiar with the group, that's going to sing at the Bagnell School by our retired fire chief, John Clement. And, and they're actually quite entertaining, and to see it, yeah. So that's on Saturday, December sixth, and the fire, and I think the Bagnell Chorus is going to perform as well. So it should be a nice way to kick off the holiday season, if you have free time.
Awesome, yes, and I also would like to wish everybody happy holidays and this great holiday season that's coming up. We also have the Groveland Historical Society at Washington Hall, they're doing their fifth annual Creator Wreath Workshop, November twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, between one and three.
That was yesterday.
It was yesterday.
I know, I missed it.
I bet it was great.
No, I missed it, I saw the sign, I missed it, yeah.
Thank you, Ed.
But is the Garden Club Greensail coming up, though? Did we miss that, too? Please don't. Yeah, there's a sign up, I just didn't, couldn't read it while I was-
I think it's the same day as the Makers Market.
Okay, so that's coming up, so we still have something that we can attend. We've missed everything, it's hard this time of year.
I did receive information from the chair of the Garden Club to post some information on the board. So she said that the Garden Club Greensail is December sixth, eight thirty to one PM at the Little Red Schoolhouse.
Yep.
Okay.
That's fun.
And then the Makers Market is December sixth, from nine thirty to three at VZ Park. Then you can go see the Memory Lainers in the evening.
A whole day.
December sixth is a full day of-
Holiday.
Supporting your Groveland community.
And holiday.
And holiday.
And holiday, very, very important stuff.
Yes.
All right, we have correspondents.
That's, I already read it.
Friends of the COA Event Flyer, which, Memory Lainers, you already read.
That's what I saw.
So with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn at eight ten PM.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.